Broadcasting right now. All right, now we are now broadcasting.
Okay.
I don't, I've got somebody on a chat, let's see.
Oh, that's me.
Okay, you're COVID, sorry.
I was asking Sean a question.
So.
Hold on.
Karen showing up as a, Karen Dilber is showing up as an attendee now.
Okay, good. I'm gonna go ahead and invite her in. Karen, can you hear us? Karen Dilber?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Well, I think we have everyone, so. The first item of business would be the call to order. To call to order the Maplewood Budget Work Session Tuesday, March 31st, 2020. We need a roll call.
Mayor Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Pardini?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Faulkner?
Here.
Your mayor Quorum is present.
Do we need a motion to excuse Councilman Crater?
I don't think you do for a work session.
Okay. All right, then, I guess we should probably just jump into the. The spreadsheet here. I've got my spreadsheets called up, I'm not sure they're in the right order. Is the first one Cambridge Commons?
Yes.
Okay, so. Would you like to, either you or Karen, give a brief introduction to each of these?
Karen, Karen, if you want to go ahead and do the debt service accounts.
Yeah, so Cambridge Commons is just a TIF account. This one's pretty straightforward. It's a, we only get property taxes from this, we don't get, you know, sales taxes, so. I just took an average of the five years revenues, and we pay out everything we take in, so. That's it. And it goes to pay down the Cambridge Commons debt.
And the, the overall debt. Does that show up on the. Accounts or work paper?
It was $519,000 when it was originally issued in 2011. I'm not sure what the outstanding principal is, if you give me just a minute, I can pull that up.
Karen, while you're doing that, you should probably get it for the other ones, too.
I'm gonna pull up the entire debt page from the CAFER as of the end of last fiscal year, that's, that's as current as we've got it.
Cool.
Okay, so, right now, we're about 180, 250, 370. It looks like we'll, we'll be about 370 paid off by the end of next year. That's assuming that. The, the property taxes. I'm not sure why the, we went from 120 down to 72. Can someone explain that to me?
We've never taken in 120,000. I'm not sure where that number came from, to be quite honest with you. We've only ever taken in around 70, 75. I put in 72 because it was an average of the last five years.
That was like, yeah, I don't know, was Marty put that number in, but you know, budget, that was what was budgeted, and you can see the actuals of the three prior years. Once Karen will eventually change that to an actual, and that number should go down pretty dramatically, correct, Karen?
Yes.
So, when you, when you did the average of the five years, did you do everything up until through last fiscal year or the current fiscal year?
Well, we haven't paid it on the current fiscal year yet, so I did everything through the end of the last fiscal year.
Oh, okay, through 2018, 19?
Yes, Cambridge Commons, we only pay once a year, and we typically pay it around this time of year. So, we've taken in about $75,000 this year.
That was my next question, so thank you.
Oh, sure. Okay, so let me see here. The Series 2011, which is Cambridge Commons, at the end of 2019, we had $384,000, so yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Ask some questions about that?
Yeah.
So, this one, I thought this one started in 2005.
No, that is the Henley Road TIF. This is Cambridge Commons. It's, my understanding, a series of townhomes where a school used to be?
Yeah, the Ambry Commons, the old Bruce School Building, Town 20. Okay, so like, when I pulled the 2019 TIF. Report from the Missouri State. It says that it started in 2000, well, the original date, the project was approved in 2005.
I don't know if that's true. I, I only started in 2011.
That, I believe that's true, because I, when I left in '04, I, I had some plans. I think it's probably been, it's probably been out there. And I guess 2007, when it was constructed.
And are payments in lieu of taxes what we pay out?
Yes. Payments in lieu of taxes is the real estate taxes that we receive, and we pay everything out that we get. We have to have $1,000 in the account to keep it open, so that the money can go in there, but otherwise, everything else we pay out, including the interest.
So, so when did we start collecting, though? I guess that's when it would have started, essentially, right? Was whenever it was finished being constructed, and we started getting that money to pay out?
That was why a Series 2011, I believe that's when the debt was given, so.
All right.
Wait, what do you, so. The first homes that, like, were, that we were collecting, there was property tax collected in 2007.
Anthony, I, I don't, I wasn't here in 2007, I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't know if the old property was still there. I don't know if part of it was constructed. I really, I apologize, I, I only started in June of 2011.
The, the, the time it would have, it won, it would, the first, if it started collecting in 2007, that's probably when they were done, because previously, we wouldn't have been collecting taxes on it, because it was.
Right.
School owned it. So, Eleanor, if you're looking at that, and you see 2007, that seems right, because it was constructed when I was gone between '04 and '08.
And typically, you don't start, I think from my recollection in my job, it doesn't, the payment don't start till you're done with construction.
Yeah, just the first, like, one of the addresses, I just put in one of the addresses in the St. Louis County Property Tax Database, and the first, like, sale date or tax year was 2007.
Yeah, it took them a long time to build those and sell them, from what I recall, living over there.
Yeah.
We can pull out, so we can pull out old records and find out exactly when it started collecting, or when we started receiving, until we can get that for you.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand if we're supposed to pay out for a certain number of years or a certain dollar amount.
Well, the outstanding debt that was originally issued was $519,000, and a typical TIF is 23 years.
So, who is receiving these payments?
We are receiving them, and we remit them to Carrollton Bank.
Okay, I was just wondering, you know, the fact that the, you had the develop, the developers bankrupt, I believe, right? Salmon?
I don't know. I, do you know who the developer was?
It was Salmon.
And that doesn't affect any. Anything on the TIF, right?
No.
Okay.
So, so I guess back to Eleanor's question, the, the end result is, the TIF is paid off when you reach a certain dollar amount paid off, because that's the amount.
Correct.
Out, which was five.
Five nineteen.
And twenty, twenty thirty.
Twenty-three years, but.
Twenty-three is the max. Usually, you don't, you don't project, you don't want to do a TIF. If you think it's going to take 23 years, you try to do it, you know, 20, 15, 18, obviously, the less, the better. You know, we're looking at our, you know, we were looking at some of our prior ones, our old Deer Creek, we paid out early. A lot of times, they pay out. But you just, the max, you can do it out.
And TIFs don't have, like, like, if a TIF were to go bankrupt, or it wasn't paid off in 23 years, the city's not responsible for the remaining debt. Like, it's not like our general obligation bonds, like for our firehouse and our pool, that we.
Right.
Are fully responsible for.
You're just giving, you're giving the developer a tax break. So, you're saying that, right, instead of you. You're allowing them to use that tax money to pay down debt, instead of coming to you, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and what did you say the balance was left on that?
As of June 30th, we had outstanding principal of $384,000. We retired about $27,000 last year, and the rest of it went to interest, and we have to have a certain amount in debt service.
Oh, gosh, that's gonna take forever.
Okay, so, yeah. I was looking at the numbers, you know, since, you know, we, we started collecting in 2007, you know, so that's been 13 years, but obviously, a very small portion of it, it looks like it's gone to the principal. Since we have. You know, over half, well over half of it remaining.
Yeah. Yeah.
Has this, has this been renegotiated at all, refinanced at all?
Not since I've been here. Again, the debt was issued in 2011, so we're really only in our ninth year of the debt itself, but it is being paid down very slowly.
Okay. Now, in, in the past, I know, is, Karen, is, is, is there a way to refinance this?
I don't know if we have reached the threshold on this to be able to refinance, but I do have some people I can reach out to, to find out.
Okay, I know, we've, we've been successful in other instances on reducing the, either the rate, and since the rate is so low right now, I would like to think that we would be able to save some money in. Having someone else look at that loan.
Right, and, well, because this is a TIF, I don't know if we'll be able to. We can refinance the city's general obligation bonds, because that is, you know, backed by the full faith and credit of the city, where this, this really isn't. This shows up in our CAFER because we make the payments, but this isn't really technically our debt. But I, I can find out if it can be refinanced. I'm just not sure if, you know, based upon the parameters of the TIF, if we can do that.
And we, and we have refinanced our general obligation bonds over the years as better rates come.
We have.
It, it seems like our remedy would be in the TIF agreement itself, so if they violate that in any way, I don't know if going bankrupt would, you know, I don't know, but that seems like would be our only way to reduce it, right? Would be in the TIF agreement that the city entered into with the developer?
I'm not sure. Like I said, I'm not sure. Each TIF agreement is structured differently.
Right.
It's about 500 pages long. So, I will, I will read this one from cover to cover if you want me to.
Well, John may know. I mean, that may be a question just for John, to ask him, what. Before you spend your time reading, I'm sure it's a lovely, fun document to read, too, so I would.
And what, what is your, what is your, what is, what is the question you're trying to get at? I just want to make sure.
Well, I think the question is, I think, it's like, you know, Barry, Barry had asked about, can you refinance it, and Karen's saying, it's at, so we can't, we can't refinance it to get a lower rate. It seems like our only remedy, we agreed to give a developer this amount of TIF. It seems like the only way you can get out of that would be if they somehow violated that agreement, would be sort of what I'm getting.
Oh, yeah, you're not gonna, yeah, you definitely aren't going to be able to get out of that. I'm sorry.
Can I do a screen share on this state report?
Sure, I mean, I, I don't know how to do that. Do you know where Sean, does anyone know where Sean went?
I don't know, he keeps popping out.
Okay.
He said his, he's having sound issues.
Okay.
Oh.
So, this is.
Good job.
Eleanor, you made me think I ruined my. I thought it was gone, too.
So, this is the, this is the 2019 TIF Annual Report from the Department of Revenue. And this is the City of Maplewood. TIF. Two pages for it. So, this is the plan approved 2005 for the demolition of the old Bruce School Building, construction of 20 townhouses. So, this is it?
Yeah, that, that's it.
That's definitely the project, yeah.
So, then, if you go to the previous page, which corresponds to it, so the Ambry, the Ambry Commons, which is what they have it called.
Yeah, we, I can't fix that. I've tried.
Interest, I mean, you have to factor in the interest, too, right, or no?
Yes.
Is. So, I mean, does it, does it say that we've paid out, like, almost $800,000?
We have received, since inception, $779,272.63. Now, I'm gonna guess, because I, I was not here for the beginning of the project, that a lot of that went to interest, and probably fees in the beginning, would be my guess. I'm not sure why, with this project, they, and this one's always puzzled me, why they only went for $519,000 in TIF debt, when the anticipated total project cost was 5.3 million?
Yeah, so do you always end up paying more in payments in lieu of taxes than the TIF reimbursable project cost?
So, payments in lieu of taxes is revenue that we receive. That's the pilot. We don't always end up paying more, what, again, I don't know, back at the beginning of this project, what that money went for, because I wasn't here, but I can tell you, since I've been here, at least half goes towards Carrollton Bank's fees, towards the debt service, and towards interest payments. And then, last year, we paid off $27,000 in principal.
It's similar to if you take out a home loan, is probably a good analogy. I mean, you're, you're paying a lot towards interest, especially early on in the process.
Yes, that's true.
I guess I'm a little confused, because I thought TIF, we were just giving them a certain amount of a tax break, so, you know, once they have paid, once they've achieved that $519,000, if that's the TIF we gave them, then it would be done. So, but what you're saying is. It seems like that's a debt amount, and we have to pay down, I guess I'm confused by that. Or are there two, were there two awards given? One, is the TIF different from the payment in lieu of tax?
So, just so we're all clear, the payment in lieu of taxes is the revenue we receive, that's the real estate taxes. That's what we collect annually from the property owners that we use to pay to Carrollton Bank for the debt. The amount of the principal of the debt was $519,000. There were notes associated with it. I don't have a copy of the notes to tell you what the interest rate is on them, but every year, that principal amount that's paid down is the notes that are redeemed by, you know, the, for lack of a better word, bondholders.
So, does, does the entirety of the property tax that's allocated to the City of Maplewood is, is, is 100% of that going towards the TIF?
100% of that is going to Carrollton Bank for them to apply towards the TIF, which, again, annually, is interest payments, it's principal payment, and it's debt service payments.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a percentage or the entirety, okay.
Everything we take in, with the exception of that $1,000 that we have to have in order to keep that bank account open, goes to Carrollton Bank to pay on those different things that I mentioned, and it's, it's, you know, a different amount every year, because again, the interest is higher in the front, and then, you know, they redeem a certain number of notes every year, so.
What's what you were asking, Barry, if, if, because sometimes you only get, like, above what the value was at the time of the TIF, so you would still owe your, like, we would still get the property tax for the, say, first, if it was worth 10% of what it is now? Is that what you were asking? Do we get?
Yeah.
Still in a.
Yeah, I didn't know if there's a formula involved, or, or 100, just 100% of what's collected goes towards that, that TIF. And, you know, so, I, I assume it doesn't affect any other entities that are collecting property tax on, it's just the City of Maplewood. Is that correct?
I, I can swear to that. I think that every TIF, you know, hurts all the entities who are around it. All, you know, all the different taxing entities are giving up their share of the.
I think so, too.
Property taxes.
Yeah. So. With the school district being the. The largest stakeholder, I would, I would assume, in this deal.
It does, it does affect all entities, Barry.
Okay.
And so, I guess Marty was way off last year, when he indicated he thought we had about two years left on this.
He did.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Last year, he indicated we had about two years left on it, so I'm guessing that's.
That's what I have in my notes, too.
Not right.
Um, no, that, that would be incorrect statement. We had, last year, we had about two years left on the pool bonds. We're making one payment this year, and then we have to make one more payment in the next fiscal year. So, maybe he got the two mixed up, I'm not sure, but no, we, we definitely have more than two years left on, on the Cambridge Commons debt.
Would that be about, about five, about five or six years, roughly, if we're at about $72,000? Is that about right? Or are we talking?
Well, last year, we only paid off $27,000. I expect it to go up a little bit more this year, since the interest would be going down.
What did you say the amount was left?
Oh, hold on a second.
Three, three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four, yeah.
Well, hopefully, their property values went up, too, so their taxes will be a little higher.
I would be, I would, I would think that's a very safe bet.
Let's go, hopefully, I mean.
Yeah, you're making a little bit more progress, yeah.
Everyone's gonna.
Yeah, I had written down two years for the pool bonds and Cambridge Commons. But.
It's definitely two years for the pool bonds. It's definitely not Cambridge Commons.
Okay.
And I, and I agree with Councilmember Schmidt, that I imagine that we will start making a little more, a little more headway towards these payments.
Yeah, it'd be nice to retire this as soon as possible.
In 2000, a fiscal year ending June 30th of 2018, we paid $24,000 toward the principal, so we paid about $3,000 more in last fiscal year, so. Towards the principal.
Okay, is, is there any other discussion on Cambridge Commons? So, what we've decided is, we're gonna do a little bit of research, see if there's any possibility of refinancing the debt to lower the. If that's possible at all. And. Besides that, there's not a whole lot we can do about. Whatever we, we collect goes towards it in, until it's retired.
That's correct.
So. Any last comments on Cambridge Commons? Otherwise, I believe the next one might be Deer Creek.
That's.
Okay. So. You want to give us a brief introduction on Deer Creek?
So, Deer Creek is another TIF. This one has payments in lieu of taxes and pilots. I'm sorry, I told you the same thing, payments in lieu of taxes and economic activity taxes, which, in lay-in terms, is real estate and property taxes and sales taxes. I budgeted based upon the average of the last five years, but I'm gonna tell you, with all this happening right now, I, I really don't know how the sales taxes are gonna go.
Yeah.
So, and everything we take in, we pay out.
Yeah. I would assume that the property taxes have, have risen dramatically. Now that it looks like most everything is occupied, so I imagine the value's gone up. And.
Um, what was the balance left on this one? Do you know what it started at, and what, what we have left?
So, we started in 2013 at 7.675 million, and then, our balance as of June 30th of 2019 was $5,915,000, and last year, we retired $155,000 in principal.
Thank you.
Quick question for you, Karen, is the. Are they also collecting, excuse me, the SID? In that district, too, as well, to pay this down?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Are you saying the Community Improvement District Funds?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
I would think that. Used for other projects.
I think it's being used just for this, just for the TIF, to pay it down faster.
Yeah, there were two bits of debt associated with this, and actually, the SID, I, I apologize, I didn't throw that in there, the SID was 2.75 million, and last year, the SID paid down $70,000 in principal on that, and the balance as of June 30th was $2,445,000.
So, that's in addition to the 7.65 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I, I know that we're. We've been using this format for quite a while with regards to the, the budget. Figures, but, you know, some of the numbers that we're talking about, it would be somehow helpful to have those in the budget. What, the original amount, how much has been paid down, how much is principal, and how much is interest? I don't know how difficult it is to put, put that in this format, though.
We could put it in the, in the program description portion. I mean, a couple of simple sentences, we could, wouldn't be hard at all.
Okay, that would be helpful.
We'll do that.
Especially for other people to understand. Do we have anyone from the general public on this?
I am showing one person.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Yeah, well, that, I think, we can absolutely do that for all these debt service accounts, Barry. Just kind of give them more up-to-date. Figures.
I noticed a lot of other communities use a different format for their budget, that's a little, that has more of that stuff in it. Is that something we may eventually go to?
Yes.
We are trying to build a budget document that would get us the distinguished budget award from the GFOA, which includes a lot more of this type of information, and, you know, statistical data on the city, and more background, and things like that, and make it a little bit easier to read. We're working on it, it just. Yeah.
The budget you see this year will be definitely, it'll be better than what you've seen in the past, and then, every year thereafter, it'll be improved, but I agree. And I, I think I talked to you guys about it a while ago. Karen and I talked about this in November, we agree.
Things are a bear to put together initially, just because there's so many little pieces that you have to integrate, and make sure all your i's are dotted, your t's are crossed. Once you have it, it's just a matter of filling in the information annually, it's just, we're setting up the template right now, so.
Awesome, thank you.
And everything's done in Excel?
Excel and Word, yeah.
Okay.
We do have a budgeting program in our software. It's just a little bit difficult to use. If they, if they roll out an update where it's a little more user-friendly, we may switch to that, but, but right now, it, it doesn't make certain things very clear to, you know, to end users who aren't finance people, so.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments on Deer Creek? If that's the case, I believe the next one, then, is the Firehouse Bonds. And. That one, I think, most of us know something about, since it's so recent. So, the. Obviously, the expenditures of. Obviously, the, the expenditures have exceeded the, the amount of the bond issue. So. I guess we need to discuss how that's affected, where that money has come from and how it's affected the budget in general.
It's coming a lot from your general revenue fund. Which is why, one of, one of a number of reasons why our general revenue fund is tight.
Can we step back to, sorry, just because I, I wasn't on here in the beginning of this. So we raised a six million dollar bond, which means the public said you can tax us this twenty-eight cents for a hundred dollars. Um, to pay out a six million dollar loan, right? Basically. And then my question is, are we still collecting that twenty-eight cents or did we?
It's point two eight, right?
Or whatever. Yeah.
We will collect that through the life of the debt.
Right. Okay. So through the life of the debt and then, and once the debt is paid off, which was. The only, the only amount you could raise from this was six million though, right? Which is why that extra cost came some, from somewhere else.
Correct.
So these, this was actually kind of interesting. Um, we did raise a premium when we issued it. Um, I want to say, I don't, sorry, the documents are on my desk. I want to say it was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Um, but please don't, don't make that the exact number because again, I don't have the documents in front of me. Um, so we actually took in six, let's just go with six point one million.
Okay.
For argument's sake. Um, we spent all of that. We spent some of. In the meantime, while we were doing all this construction that took a number of years, we levied this twenty-eight cent taxes, you know, the point two eight. And um, we were bringing in those revenues. So we spent about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand of that. Um, and then when there were still work that needed to be done, we spent uh, easily, I, I think it was what, nine hundred thousand? Out of the general fund. And then when we originally purchased the property, it was like five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was not part of that bond issue either. So.
And one other thing is, I think they were hoping to purchase the fire truck with some of that money as well.
Yes.
Oh, because we were, we had to purchase. So I mean, that's not actually money you see, but it.
So.
I think that fire truck was seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, if I remember recall.
I think that's true.
The one we already purchased a few years ago?
Pardon?
The one we purchased a few years ago.
Yeah, just a couple of months back. But Councilmember Schmidt, the idea was hopefully we could use.
Right.
To pay for, okay.
I, yeah, I, yeah. So, so then you're saying that the fallout of going over the six point one. Was the two sixty plus the nine hundred plus the five hundred plus the seven forty-four?
Yes.
Alright.
The seven forty-four they put in the financing documents as they wanted to purchase equipment, you know, if there was any leftover. Obviously, there wasn't. So.
And if my memory serves me right, um, after we went, after we got done with the bond issue. Uh, Captain Merrill came to us and said that. Somebody had screwed up in the pricing of the firehouse. And um, they had to rework a lot of stuff to get it down to a reasonable budget. Um, because he only had six million to spend at that time. So. Yeah, I, I thought that was kind of silly, but.
So I'm not, I'm not totally sure about that. I, I do know that I remember hearing a lot of stories about.
He came to us about it. So. He said that, that somebody, the architect or somebody forgot something or costs of a particular material. Was, you know, double what they had anticipated or something like that. I mean, I don't, I don't know if it was anybody's fault per se. But he, he came to us and said it was gonna be over and he was gonna remove a bunch of stuff, you know, kind of rework it so we could get, get it. Get it down to what it needed to be. So. We have notes from back then because we had, we had a meeting about it.
I thought I, he said, uh, either in Citizens Academy or in a budget meeting last year that. There was something about S, like, cost of construction increased so much after we were well out of the recession. That it came in, the materials were much higher than the original estimate.
Yeah. Yeah. It was something like that. Yeah, so.
Well, and I remember something about the backup generator was maybe twice the cost of what was estimated.
No, what they forgot on the backup generator was, uh, there was no transfer switch. But they installed the generator, but they hadn't, hadn't quoted the transfer switch with it, which is. A, you know, I don't know. I probably would have made that ridiculous. But anyway, that's, it's already, it's done. And we had to pay, we paid for it. It's like thirty thousand dollars.
But it's water under the bridge. Like you said, it's done. But we also hired a construction manager for that project. You know what I mean? Who's supposed to be.
Right.
Value engineering the project and making sure everything is in order. But. Again, we know it's over budget.
Well, if you pull out the other services and charges, which is the debt service. Yeah, we're. Uh, and on the. I'm not sure where the architects fees came in. There's about a hundred thousand dollars there. But if you, are there, are there charges prior to two thousand sixteen on this? Because the capital outlay uh, is five fifty, five point five, I should say, a million on this. And. Uh, yeah, so. You know, at, at least what I see here on, on the capital outlay. So uh, if we go back to two thousand fifteen, sixteen, where there. I can't imagine that numbers were spread out over three years on this. But.
Bit to construct it. I can, let me look on the general ledger and see how far back we go. My, my uh, connection sometimes gets a little funny, so it might take me a minute.
Because that six million should only be for capital outlay and other services and charges that aren't associated with the. The financing of the project. And I see professional services, a hundred thousand dollars, then fifty-three thousand. So there's been a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars. Which uh, would put us only really a hundred thousand. Dollars over the budget. And I know it's been more than that. And I'm assuming that the insurance and bonds numbers are strictly tied to the financing.
Uh, the insurance and bonds? Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, my system is being cranky and I, I can't figure out why. It won't let me move around in Tyler right now.
I don't, I don't remember when, when we started incurring a cost on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, to find it, but uh, Tyler just logged me out. That's the finance software. Okay, account numbers.
Seven zero zero one zero.
Yeah, you asked about professional services as well.
Yeah, I see that there was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars spread out over uh, two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, let's see. Um. Okay, um, well, I, I'll have to get that to you because the software keeps kicking me out.
Okay.
Not really sure why. I apologize.
I'm just trying to reconcile some of these numbers and understand uh, how they all add up.
My, if I had to guess, I would say that uh, probably it was um, SM Wilson who was responsible. For, you know, the oversight of the project. But again, I, I can't swear to it right now because I can't get stupid thing to work. Oh, there we go. Uh, let's see. So. Looks like. Paid for some, um, in fiscal year ending fourteen, fifteen, we paid for some environmental assessment. And.
Okay.
Surveys. Basically, it looks like in uh, that fiscal year, we were kind of looking into, um, you know, site assessment. And environmental issue, architecture.
Okay, so if we're doing environmental assessments in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, then uh. I, did, did work actually start in two thousand fifteen, sixteen?
It looks.
You'd probably have a lot of design work at that point, Barry.
Yes.
Yeah, well. Yeah, my guess is that uh. Architectural fees on something like that would be in the vicinity of eight, nine percent, I guess. So that means that uh, if the construction was around five or six, then. Then there would have been an extra four hundred thousand or something like that, or half a million, you know, prior to that.
Uh, we are also paying during that timeframe Faith Group for the, the lead commissioning as well. Uh, let's see, what else? Gemma, the architect.
Uh-huh.
Uh, yeah, all I see in that line item is Gemma and um, the Faith Group.
But that was in fourteen, fifteen, Karen. Is that accurate?
That was the following fiscal year. So um, in fourteen, fifteen, that's when we did the environmental studies. And we had the surveys. And then the following fiscal year is when we started paying the architect and um, the, the lead group.
To do the design work.
Okay. So.
In the, in the last.
Go ahead.
In the last budget from last year. Paid insurance and bonds in twenty fifteen, sixteen. In addition to quite a bit of professional services.
See, Eleanor, what page is that on that PDF? Do you know?
It's Marty has it, his handwritten number is one thirty.
Thank you.
So right now, um, what I see in the insurance and bonds going back. Um. Let's see, what year is this? Two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we paid, who did we pay? We paid the Daniel and Henry and some, uh, Daniel and Henry Company for builder's risk policy on the building. And then um, every year since, we've paid um, UMB, three hundred and eighteen dollars. It's a, a fee for the, you know, I guess, insurance on the debt. Since they manage it for us.
Probably like a trustee's fee.
Yeah.
So um, I guess, what, how much do we have left on that?
Um, let me get to, to that screen. Um, okay, so as of six thirty of nineteen, we had, I'm sorry, a balance outstanding of five million seventy-five dollars. With, we retired two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of that debt.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, let me see. Um. And the amount you see in, since we're only working on the expenses page, um, the revenues I, I looked at for next year are a little higher than the expenses. All of it will be remitted to UMB to pay down the debt. But what I've included here is just, um, we had a thousand something for UMB. And um, just the amount of the, the principal and interest on the bonds. That's, that's what you see here. Is just, you know, the amount that, the bare minimum that we would need to pay for this, this year. Of course, any revenue we take in will be remitted to UMB for them to pay down the debt. But from what, you know, from this side of it on the expenses page, this is the principal and interest that we owe for next fiscal year and UMB's fees. Those are things we have to cover.
Okay. Uh, are there additional questions on the firehouse? So any. Any prop F funds would go to. None of that would obviously go to uh, pay down this debt.
Correct.
Is there, is it, would it be advantageous for us to refinance this like we did the pool bonds?
I don't know if we're eligible right now. If we are, um, yeah, I, I would think so, since the interest rates have dropped. I can look into it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Appreciate it. Okay, if there aren't any other questions, the next. Uh, category, let me get this up here, solid waste. Is that right?
And they wrote special allocation fund.
Okay. You want to give us a brief intro to that?
Sure. So again, this is just another TIF. Um, and I, I based it upon um, an average of the last five years as far as what we've taken in. Because everything we take in, that's what we pay out. Let's see, I'm trying to. Pull up the page from last year to let you know how much we had outstanding. So that's the series two thousand five. And as of June thirty, two thousand nineteen, we had six million fifteen thousand left on that. And we paid down six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of the debt last year. The original issuance was twelve million one hundred and fifty thousand.
Sorry, would you, would you mind saying those three numbers again?
Sure. Okay, so the original issuance was twelve million one hundred and fifty thousand. Last year, we paid a principal of six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which brought our balance at June thirty to six million fifteen thousand dollars. And this is, um, you know, again, it's a TIF, so there's real estate taxes, which is the pilots. And there's, because it's, um, you know, lows and all that, if there's economic activity taxes, which, which is also the sales taxes. I averaged the last five years to come up with the, my expenses are gonna equal my revenues because whatever I bring in, I'm gonna pay out. Um, because that's the nature of, of this debt. I cannot know what the sales taxes are gonna do because of everything that's happening right now. Um, you know, as we get closer to coming up with the final budget, we may decide to change those numbers based upon, you know, different receipts that come in. But um, as of right now, what I did before all this, this craziness, um, was averaged the last five years.
What percentage of, of that? Of those numbers are based on property tax and sales tax?
Okay, let me uh. See if the system will cooperate and I can tell you that.
We can get some idea of what kind of a hit we're gonna be taking on the sales tax end.
Yeah. Okay, so. Last year, we took in four hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents in real estate taxes. To date this year, we have taken in three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-one cents in real estate taxes in this fund. Uh, as far as sales taxes go. Please hold, it's frozen. Um. Last year, we took in five hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars in um, sales.
Okay, so. So we, we think that property tax will go up and the sales tax will go down then.
Um, you know. I'm hopeful it won't, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it will. Yeah. Especially, you know, in this area because. I don't think Sam's is part of that debt, is it, Anthony?
No.
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 No, we, we got, we got. Well, actually, we got lucky on Sam's and Walmart, but.
Yeah, it's the lows.
Otherwise, we.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they have it. The only thing, the only, the only incentive we gave, there was a TDD for that north portion. Of Walmart and Sam's.
More questions on that one?
I was just going to ask you, what year did that start? Do you have that information?
So that was issued in two thousand five. And. That's as far back as I go. My, I don't have the TIF reports here, they're unfortunately at my desk.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So I couldn't tell you when, like, they started planning and and all that. I can look it up and and let you know, once I get to work, probably Thursday of this week.
Okay, just curious.
Okay, so. Any further comments or questions on South Hanley, I mean, Hanley Road's allocation? And Anthony, that money was used just to build out the, to do. Improvements and to build the project?
Correct.
Okay. All right. The next. Line item, we've got, is that one solid waste?
Sure.
Sewer, okay, sewer lateral, thank you. Yeah, mine are in different, different order on the, my Excel spreadsheet. So. You want to talk a little bit about sewer lateral program?
There's not a whole lot out of the ordinary with this. You'll notice. We put in Personnel Services in the past, there was a, that's an attempt to try to. Protect the general fund. Those are actual costs that we're paying our employees to do it. If this was a, if this fund wasn't, if we didn't have so many. Sewer laterals out there to repair, we would obviously take all of our money out of there. But what we can do is if we want to borrow, in the past, you noticed we borrowed from the sewer lateral out of the general fund, because. Right now, the amount of money we bring in for the sewer lateral does not meet all the needs for all the sewer laterals we have, and there's just not much we can do about it at this point. I don't really see that changing anytime either. If you remember the Prop. For sewer lateral, going back probably five or six years ago. At that time, one of the selling points, we do one hundred percent of the restoration, and we, and we don't have a cap on it. In the future, we may want to look at putting a cap on it, because we're one of the only, we're one of, I think we might be the only city left doing that. Some of these repairs can be upwards of. Eight, ten thousand dollars. Some are, you know, twelve hundred dollars. But when you start getting a lot of these over time, and really what has happened is every time there's a home sale now, they inspect sewer laterals where many years ago they did. It's just something we may want to consider in the future, but by keeping the personnel cost in here, it allows us to borrow off the capital development. And or the stormwater capital account, which we're looking into right now, which those, those funds have more money in it, and obviously our general fund, so. It's balanced right now. It's clearly not going to be enough to do all the laterals we're anticipating this year. So, but I put in the email that if we do. Borrow out those funds, it would require an ordinance and the council would be, would be notified at that time, because you would have to approve that. But I just was letting you know. We believe that we're not going to have enough money in this budget right now to to cover our sewer lateral costs. We probably have a current waiting list of at least, it was like twenty-two the last time I looked. So. A lot of these are minor, that aren't causing any problems. They could have been there for many, many years, but when somebody did a home sale, they noticed it. So we've sent a letter out. We obviously, if it's, somebody has squidge in their basement, we obviously stop what we're doing and get it fixed right away. But if it's a minor issue, maybe the vent has a crack or the stack is cracked. Those are things that I'm thinking about. Taking out of it if the, you know. But right now, I'm sure these people that we will fix it when the money is there.
A couple of questions, but I noted, and I'm reading it wrong, but the amounts on the first page don't seem to match the detail for the past years. Like, grand total for that two thousand sixteen seventeen says one twenty, but when you look, it's a different amount. So I, I just. And it looks like they're, they're lower, closer to what you have budgeted for this year. So yours, so in the past, like, I guess, are you saying the amount we're getting in. Is is less than what we've planned for in the past?
So.
In about for that, I guess.
So the summary page, please disregard, I forgot to update those totals. You look at the accounts pages, those are filled in with actual amounts that were expended, with the exception of the last two columns, which is the budgeted for nineteen twenty. For twenty twenty-one. So fifteen sixteen, sixteen seventeen, and. No, that's not right. The, the numbers are correct for the three columns to the left, the two columns to the right are just estimates. So these are amounts that were actually expended. We have had to borrow from different funds for this. These are the expenditures. This is not the revenues. The column for twenty twenty-one, I I'm. Because I I don't know, you know, what you guys think of borrowing from other funds. I estimated our revenues for the last five years, I averaged them out, which is how come I came up to the expense amount that I came up with.
So that makes, that makes sense. And that's what I was asking. Yeah, so you're saying the amounts to the left can include amounts we've borrowed to pay off, like the work we've done. But the five two oh one is the realistic amount, sort of average, we'll get from from that fund without having to borrow.
Correct.
All right.
You've borrowed Councilmember Schmidt in the past, primarily from the general fund. I think the last time we did, I talked Marty, I I talked Marty, I think, into doing the capital development twenty-four hundred account. Like, that was the last time we borrowed.
I think we've done it twice since I, since I've been on.
It, yeah, it wouldn't be surprising. It's typically seems like something we have to do every year.
And then, is this a full salary of someone, or just the part of a salary assigned to this work?
Hourly, hourly averaged.
Okay. Because I I noticed, like, insurance and stuff didn't go up, or just, so. That's probably a question for a different.
But we don't have our new insurance rate yet.
Okay.
So I I didn't include them, because I don't know what they're going to be. I just left them static.
Okay. In a nutshell, with this, we don't bring in enough money to really sustain this fund. So, again, I don't want to do anything. In the, like, immediately, but in the near future, maybe a policy decision that we will be bringing to you. I just think it's too close to after you pass a a bond issue to be making changes. But in the future, it's not really sustainable for what we bring in, and we are at fifty dollars. Pardon?
What's, what's the amount we bring in for this yearly?
Is it about, Karen, what was it last year? Because you had the the latest amounts, is it about a hundred thousand?
Uh, yeah, so the expenditures total is the average of the last five years of revenue that we brought in. So we brought in about a hundred, a hundred thousand.
Well.
Before that, and before we did that increase, I think it was right around eighty, eighty-five. So it it has brought in more revenue. But honestly, we were stuck at twenty-eight for entirely too long. It should have been increased many years ago. Big change was everyone getting their sewer lateral inspected whenever there's a a change of ownership in in homes.
Well, if 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 we're covering, if the revenue is covering eighty percent or so of the the cost. Of this lateral repair, you know, last week I had mine done, I paid thirty-four hundred for that. So. If I had to pay twenty percent of that, you know, I I think that's reasonable. I would have liked to pay twenty percent of it, but it wasn't a. It wasn't a sewer lateral, you know, program qualified repair. So.
The concern I have, the concern I have, and why why I really liked paying a hundred percent, and I don't think it's reasonable, is you could have somebody on a fixed income who, you know, has a. Keep in mind, the depth of the lateral is, really can dramatically increase the cost, because you've got to obviously get down to it. The location, you know, it could be underneath a, you know, a part of the porch, but not at the foundation. Have a set of steps, you know, ten, twelve steps. Some of those homes are kind of built up on a hill. That can really get expensive to where, you know, somebody's lateral repair could be ten thousand dollars. And they're on a fixed income. And so that's just really where you, so I mean, I don't know if it's even legal, but those are some of the things we may want to look at, too, is income eligibility on a percentage. Because I just hate the idea that somebody could be kicked out of their house because they can't afford to pay for sewer lateral. And my philosophy has always been, if we do, I know roads are bad, and we need to fix our roads, but I would rather have somebody sewer, sewer fixed as opposed to. Maybe somebody waits a year on a block for a road, because a typical road, a block could cost a few thousand dollars just to do it in concrete construction. And so. I mean, to me, it's something I would like to keep as long as possible. Some people can afford it, and some people can't. I just hate to see someone lose their house for that.
But can we research what other communities are doing with regards to their?
I, we can absolutely do that. Most of them all have a cap.
Do we have any idea? Percentage that have been repaired so far? Uh, do we have any idea, like, the percentage of laterals that have been repaired by the city?
It's, we can get that. It's not a, it's not a very, it's not a a great number. The reason is, is because we just repair the break, we don't repair the entire line. So. You still, you know, you may have about a five or six foot section of EBT, but it's clamped to plate tile still. You know, if 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 we had more money in the account, we would probably do additional repairs. So we're kind of putting Band-Aids on the problem.
There's no. You know, MSD wants to separate sanitary and sewer and storm. But, you know, they're not installing. Dual sewers in Maplewood, at least not in the older section, to accommodate that.
They have recently, they did Yale, Yale Avenue, if we remember, they put a monster storm sewer in there. Williams Avenue, before that, with this, right behind Mr. Wizard's, Williams Avenue, at the street there, they did that as well. They've got other ones planned, but they're just so expensive that they do. And and if you remember Southwest as well, that was all part of a massive sewer separation project. On the northeast portion of Maplewood, and it even, it even affected a lot of homes in Richmond Heights. So that was a, that was a massive one. So they are making slow progress.
But is is anyone in terms of laterals, or are they, you know, they're tying into the sanitary, because they have to. But there's probably still storm water being. You know, being fed into the same sanitary line, you know, sewer laterals. I can.
There's no doubt, there's no doubt there, there are, they went around to all those homeowners at the time and had them, asked them to disconnect whether they did or not. I don't know what their level of enforcement is, but a lot of those homes were built. With the storm drains running right down to the lateral. I think probably ninety-five percent of the homes in Maplewood have that at one point in time.
Is, you know, I know MSD is charging us more for, you know, impervious. It, has that started yet? Them taking the aerial photography and and assessing, you know, how much more they can charge us for our surface runoff?
I don't know where that's come. I know a while ago, they did it, and they didn't do it, and it wasn't legal. They had to go, they got sued, and they lost that. I don't know where they are on that right now. I know they're looking into it, I, but I haven't seen anything. Recently on that. One thing to note is, is if if these people do disconnect their downspouts and just have the water drain. In their yards or on the surface, you're going to have a lot of complaints. A lot of neighbors are going to be upset with each other, because you're going to have homes that have never leaked. You know, and then all of a sudden, you're going to a discharge, a significant discharge of water right near, right near their home. I mean, we, we had, on Williams Avenue, we had a lot of those residents had their sewers disconnected, or their, pardon me, their gutter system. System disconnected, and we, we got a flood of calls, and we believe most of those residents just reconnected it later. That's what a lot of them are doing. Because you may have, you know, an old stone foundation, and all of a sudden, you get a ton of water, hydrostatic pressure, it's going to find its way into your basement. Yeah, several people mad at each other on Williams when that happened.
Well. I know that doesn't directly relate to the sewer lateral program, so I appreciate your indulgence there. Are there any other questions with regards to the sewer lateral program?
I just want to circle back to Jenny's question real quick about if we can get some data regarding how many have been done. If we can get that data via GIS or or however is practical, that we have an idea of what the potential liability is for future.
And Anthony, we only do single-family duplexes. We don't do four families?
Uh, no, we just, I think it's all, I need to look at that again, but I believe it's only single-family and duplexes. I'll have to double check that. Um, and to answer, Councilmember. Absolutely get that for you, Sandy.
Cool.
Okay, yeah, I would say we're under five percent. You know, if we're doing, what, twelve a year or so?
Oh, no, we're doing, we're probably more twenty to twenty to thirty a year.
And of those twenty to thirty, you know, some of them are going to have other problems down the road, too. So. You know, if if we're doing, if we do two hundred and fifty in ten years, that's not making much of a dent.
And that's really the, that's, that's really kind of the problem. Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I'll go back, I'll probably grab the last three years, because if I go back any further. It's, it's not going to, it's not going to be as, I could even go back five years. But if I go back even ten years before all these home inspections were, were required, and these numbers aren't accurate anyway. The current conditions are, we got a lot of sales in Maplewood, and every home sale now has it. So. That's really been the major change. I mean, there were years ago, when I first got here in oh eight, that fund had plenty of money in it. Every year, we had plenty of money. And then the real estate market, the inspections, and wisely so, they changed, because that's a very expensive repair. And then that just killed us. It's probably been going on about eight years now, if I had to think, think about it. It's been a while. But I'll get those numbers for you over the last three or four years, and that should. Meter where we need to go.
Well, and I do think that there's a certain percentage of us, like Barry and myself, that have replaced our laterals without financing from the city. So. So I don't know if we can, you know, even guesstimate what percentage have already been done.
Well, Barry, you are adding a new lateral, correct?
No, I'm, it, I'm building on top of it, so I have to go from play to PVC.
Well, I will say, too, at the old house, we replaced ours, it was under the house, but that doesn't mean that the part from the yard to this, to like, the city portion is still not. Like, we replaced out further than we had to, but there could still be a piece in front of our old house that may be bad. You know what I mean? So I think. Place under your house, there could still be. Something that.
I mean, and honestly, if you, if you go just walk, walk any sidewalk in Maplewood and look at the size of some of these trees. And then look for where the sewer vent is, you can tell those trees are going, just tearing right into the, that that's usually where we have the break, is right around the the tree area.
Well, I think we should take down all the trees then.
Yeah. I'll make sure they call the, I'll make sure they call the mayor if they have any concerns.
Well, unfortunately, that's been the philosophy of of several, you know, property and land. Well, unfortunately, that's been the philosophy of, of several, you know, property and landowners. And I don't know how accurate that was or if just an excuse. But any other discussion on sewer laterals? I think the final one is solid, solid waste, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, how about an introduction for this one?
Not much has changed. It's just, if you remember, we renegotiated the rates, which is why it went down slightly. Other than that, you guys just approved the contract. So I think everyone's well versed on the solid waste and recycling.
So I, I had a question. So this is, this is the trash tax rate that we recently passed and increased to.
Correct.
Yes. And so, cause I think there was some misinformation shared at our last town hall. So like, just in conversation that, I mean, this is tax that comes in, we pay out. So if we have to cut in our budget, we're not cutting our trash because we have to use this money for trash.
Yes, this is specifically for trash.
Right. This should be fine for a while because we just upped the, the amount we're collecting to cover the next, what, 10 years or so hopefully.
I don't believe it's going to last 10 years. I know that's what the, the projections you were given and that's what they said. But I, it should be fine for a while, but I don't believe it'll be 10 years.
But it won't be, trash service won't be affected in the next few, couple of years by.
No, no.
Yeah, there are issues though in terms of dumping fees, in terms of, you know, landfill's closing, in terms of transportation cost. And are, you know, it sounds like Republic is going to continue to do recycling. But, you know, that, that's changed in quite a few municipalities across the country where recycling is either not available or it's not, it's not economically feasible. And, you know, our, our recycling services show up as $20,000 and our trash is 500? Is that correct? Or is, is part of that 500 allocated to recycling?
Part of that is, go ahead Karen.
Oh, I thought you were fielding it. I, it wasn't me speaking, I'm sorry.
It was me. I, if you look at the detail, the 20,000 is just recycling for Marietta.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The overall, the overall, whatever the 500 is, that's both. Now Barry, years ago, we used to break those down separately, but we changed that probably five years ago. Lumped in together. And the Marietta, we will, we will get reimbursed for that by the business owners.
Okay, and the yard waste pickup, I see a trash bags and tags.
We also get reimbursed for that. When people buy their bags and tags.
Okay, otherwise people are paying directly to Republic, right? For, for yard waste?
If they have that, if they, if they participate in that service, correct?
Okay.
But you, I think just a few, not very many people do that, right?
No, but I mean, it's, it's not, it's a pretty decent amount. I mean, you can kind of tell when you just go out and look on the curb and see who's putting it out there. But it's not, not too many. I, I have the numbers from the last time, I can, I can get those, the last time we negotiated that. They tried to get rid of the bags and tags because that was, that's, that's an advantageous, that's an advantageous program for the residents. That's something that Marty negotiated many, many years ago. And every year they try to get, every time there's a renegotiation, they try to get rid of it.
It was expensive. I remember when I first moved here, they didn't do that. And it was like, I mean, it was 20 to 30 bucks a month.
Yeah. And that's, that's what's nice about the bags and tags, you use it as, as you go. But they have to send a truck throughout, you know, basically the entire town. Every, you know, every week to just to make sure they're not missing any. And that's why they don't want, that's why they're trying to get rid of it. You know, if I'm not hearing it and some of you are here in the future, don't ever let that go. Cause to me, that's a fantastic service for the residents.
You know, I, I rent the, the yard waste container for $2 a month. And then I just put tags on it, you know, whenever I need for them to pick it up. And those yard waste containers hold a lot of yard waste. And, you know, and I, I don't want to screw around with the bags. Cause I would say that the yard waste container, if you jump on it a couple of times, will hold as much as maybe, you know, four bags. So, you know, I found that, that program to be extremely helpful.
You're cheating the system?
No, you can, you can, I don't know, you can use a trash can. We use trash cans, but put a tag.
One bag?
But they're small, they're, yes, they're small trash. So Barry maybe is cheating.
You jump on that in your front yard, can, can you let us know the next time you're going to do that?
I'd like to see that. Trying to squish his leaves down so he can put more on there, Sean, I think.
Don't mine in your big container.
Well, I think Jenny and Sean, if you guys know, hey Jenny and Sean, if you guys have extra, you can just dump them in Barry's yard. He's got this.
What am I going to do?
I also sweep the street in front of my house too and put it in there and, and on Marietta, I mean Marshall. I picked up about 250 lineal feet of street too.
Yeah.
But anyway, are there any further questions with regards to yard waste? I mean, refuse solid, solid waste. Is there any other, I think that covers everything that we had on our agenda, is that correct?
It does. And just to let everyone know, obviously, we've got our council meeting coming up on the 7th. And then we'll have another budget work session on the 14th and probably every week thereafter, if that's okay?
Wait, what?
I'm sorry, I apologize, I have planning commission on the 7th, I apologize. We have a budget work session and a planning commission, or pardon me, and a council meeting on the 14th. So we'll do the, we'll do the work session at, what time do you guys want to do it? At like six, I guess, and then go into the council meeting? Is that how you want to handle it on the 14th?
Yeah, that's fine. If, if the scope is pretty much the same, it's 7:22 right now. So it takes us about an hour and 20 minutes to get through what we did tonight. Gives us 10 minutes to take a break before we get into session, council session. So I'm fine with that.
We can, we can absolutely end it or at, you know, whatever time you want. And then, then we'll just start a new meeting for the recording purposes.
Okay. And so as far as recording, I assume this work session is being recorded?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got that figured out now.
You can show it on your screen.
On the top left, it's on.
Yeah, it'll tell you it's recording.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for doing that.
So.
Yes.
Sean, would you, so for the next one, would you recommend setting up like two separate links? Like two separate invites or?
Yeah, it'll be two separate budgets. That's right. Want to be a webinar budget and the other one will be a budget webinar.
Counsel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't want to put them into the same meeting.
So.
For the same recording. It, it doesn't really matter to be honest with you, but it's.
I mean, you can break up the recording.
You can, but it's probably easier for residents to know that, you know, we have, there's a specific meeting, you know, for council or a specific meeting, you know, for the budget. So this is my concerns.
I agree. It'd be just as easy to do it that way. And then, and if anything, if you've got anything for the agenda or anything, let me know. I'll have, I'll have a few planning commission items. So we'll definitely need a meeting.
We should probably have a closed session for personnel issues so we can discuss the hiring process.
Okay.
So.
Anyone else have anything else?
Just as of right now, we are doing council and work session on the 14th and probably the 28th, but we don't have anything on the 21st, right?
It's whatever the council wants, the 14th and 28th would be fine.
You mean the?
14th for sure is what, is all we have scheduled right now.
Okay.
And so next week or 14th, if you guys decide you want to do it the 21st or the 28th out, I mean, I'll, Karen, I'll make our Tuesdays available. And I, I've already told the department has to keep their Tuesday nights free.
And I'll be available, I'm not going anyplace for a while. So, you know, every, every Tuesday, if we want to go through the budget and you get that taken care of, I'm willing to do that myself. So I assume no one's leaving the country.
That's a possibility.
Well, I guess then we probably need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay healthy and be careful out there and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you guys, I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.